And then we will get started then. So, welcome to the Policy Review Work Session dated October 2nd, 4 o'clock. And we are resuming our policy review, starting with Chapter 3, which was overseen by Shirley Brown and Todd Boden. So, I'll kick it over to you unless you want Art to start?
I'd rather have Art to start.
I think I'm saying that every policy time.
That just sounds so much better. There is only just some technical changes in here, mostly statutes references, but you go right ahead and explain why on earth we needed to change these statute references.
Oh, I...
So, Art to start.
Not going to go that far.
All right. Well, I'll try to do this the way we've done them in the past, and that is to keep things moving. I'm not trying to talk over anybody, so if you have something, please stop me, but otherwise I'm going to try to keep us moving forward. So, 3.10, Administrative Organization, no substantive changes there. 3.11, Schools Within a School.
Oh, I was going to say, because I think Chapter 6, as you said, has some grammatical errors. If you want, whatever's easiest for you, and however you're making notes.
I'm going to give you this, but I would like to get it back.
Okay.
Because I want to make sure the changes are made.
With the grammatic or...
And I realized I didn't say that in the last set that I did this.
She reads for Syntex, I read content.
I will agree.
Okay. I will take it if it shows what's...
Oh, it shows.
Okay.
Okay, is that okay with you, though? So, that you, I mean, Mark's...
You're just making a couple grammatical changes? I mean, you're capitalizing or you're uncapitalizing?
Mostly uncapitalizing. People think it should be capital, and it shouldn't be.
But for the sake of time...
Right. I'll just take that and make those changes.
So, but on this one, you're just taking where it says, "subdivide into schools within schools," you just want to change that capital S to a small s?
Yep.
I don't think he's, I think he can handle that without getting a copy of it, so you can keep...
No, I think they're...
She has a number of them.
Oh, you're going to give them the whole book? Oh, geez. Okay.
Moving along to 3.20.
Okay. 3.20, no suggested changes there.
Just commas where they need to be.
You said you were going to give them the book.
I am going to give them the book.
3.20.
3.201, same.
Nada.
3.202.
Nada.
There's a small change, yeah.
3.21, no recommended change.
Nada.
3.22, same. And where you see, just so you know, where you see, like, on that one, State Board of Ed Rule was stricken out, a lot of those have been repealed over the years. That's, if they're stricken entirely, that's usually what it is. 3.23, Emergencies. And this was really, I think, streamlined as much as anything.
One correction. One.
We're on 3.2...
3.23, Emergencies. Do you have a question or...
Yeah, so this...
Sorry, Eric.
So, if, things that comes to mind is a hurricane, that's about the welfare of the children. You would call a special meeting? When an emergency exists affecting the health, safety of students, the principal...
Where public interest requires board action, I would call a special meeting, but not...
So, what does that mean? What does that mean, public? Public interest isn't the health and safety of the children? I don't understand.
If I needed you to take action, as an example, there was no special meeting following Hurricane Irma because there was no action required on the board. At a subsequent meeting, we did take action to adjust the calendar, but it did not mean a special...
Can you give me a scenario where you would have to get a special board meeting in order to close a school?
If a gas leak caused an explosion at the school, and the school is no longer inhabitable, I would call a special meeting of the board, and we might redistrict students to other schools.
That's pretty good to do on the fly. There you go.
I would think that would be the health, social welfare of the students. Okay.
But 2, says in the case of an emergency, the superintendent can close a school and then...
Yeah, which we have.
...tell you about it afterwards.
But principals have the authority to extend, not release, the students?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's a principal thing, not a superintendent thing. Okay.
We both hold that authority.
3.25, AEDs. 3.30, no changes suggested there.
I have a question, because I know it's, but I honestly, I don't know which is correct. It's on the second line. Each principal is responsible for, it's either the enforcement or enforcement of.
Yes, I think it should, I think it should be either for enforcing Florida statutes or for the enforcement of.
So...
Enforcement of.
Enforcement of.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I've got that. 3.40, some fairly minor changes there, I think.
Just caps.
3.41, the language that's added here pretty much comes from the statute on the chairperson's authority in the event of disruption. You have to give a warning before you excuse someone.
Dismiss. Yep.
Okay, in both cases, chairperson needs to be capitalized, because it says the school board chairperson.
Okay.
Says two of them.
I have a question about this one.
Okay.
I just didn't know if any of this, did any of this change as it relates to the medical marijuana?
Well, the medical marijuana makes this all very tricky.
Yep.
And as you all may remember, I'm not even sure when, the summer or maybe late spring, we had a workshop discussion of the medical marijuana law. And I think where we left there was, the board said, "You didn't want a specific policy on that." But our procedure, I believe, little, small P, procedure, is that if a student had, and it's not a prescription, because that's not the right word, but I think certification to use medical marijuana, we would not store it, and we would not, we are employees, would not administer it, but we would all, we would first encourage that being done off-campus. But if it, for some reason, had to be done on-campus, we would invite the parent, or for minors, have to have caregivers, who are typically the parent, to be the one to administer it. So, the law also specifically said it didn't affect necessarily employment rights, and this constitution, Florida Constitution even says it doesn't affect schools generally. So, the reason we added the word "federal law" in here is to reemphasize...
Okay.
...that we do not allow the marijuana on campus.
Okay.
That was the reason for...
The federal.
For putting in federal.
And it is coming up.
On Eric?
Just, was it on 3.42?
Yep.
So, the thing that you added, it looked like before it was at the discretion of whoever's heading up the field trip, when they saw somebody, an adult with beer at night, they could say, you know, they could use their discretion to say whether the person needs to leave or not. But now, we're taking away that person's discretion, and they must...
Well, their participation, so as an example, if you had a trip out of town, and an adult chaperone was to be caught in possession of alcohol, we may relieve them of their chaperoning responsibilities, but may not send them home. We may just say, "We don't need you on today's trip. Why don't you stay back?" But it doesn't mean that we may be sent back. They will no longer supervise kids, but we have the option of asking them to leave.
Well, and that also goes to students as well.
Right.
So, I mean, you may have a situation where the student won't have to incur the additional expense of going home, but they may have to sit with a chaperone in the hotel room or something.
Chaperone goes out at night, you know, gets asleep, goes to bar.
No after-hours. When you volunteer to chaperone on a trip, it's a 24/7 proposition. So, there is no, "The kids were in bed, and we went down to the lobby," or behind the campfire, or anything like that. Before we leave this policy, I just want to have a short discussion of this policy accurately reflects current practice, although we do get a number of inquiries. I'll use the Florida House as an example, where they wish to serve wine at a reception after-hours on the deck, or one of the performing arts centers wants to do a reception on a Saturday afternoon. And we have cited this policy that says it is and always is a school campus. It does limit access particularly to the two conference centers that are two technical colleges. We get a number of inquiries about using it for receptions and other things, and when we remind them it's a school campus, and it is dry, they typically take their functions elsewhere. But I just want to put that on your radar screen, that if you wanted suggestions about how serving alcohol on campus might be accomplished, or if you're comfortable with this current policy.
No.
Caroline, I knew that was coming.
No. I feel there's no need to serve alcohol. I don't think that every function you go to has to have alcohol, and that's what that says to me. I can't go to this function because it doesn't serve alcohol. I think it's wrong. It's a wrong message to send to our kids.
No, and I think it comes down to whether we rental revenue or not, right? So, and I know VPAC, when this first, when we first opened VPAC, and Lori and I had to go through, because they were, I think, in the initial contract, they had allowed it, and it was against the policy, and we had to make a decision of whether we were going to do that or not. And I believe the board, I mean, we said no. And I think, because, in my mind, and I see where that we've, the district has missed opportunities to host events that may provide, may provide great value, but they had a vision of including some kind of alcoholic beverage. My concern is that's, there's very narrow thinking. There's a lot of other things that can occur in that time. I just think it's a safer, more protective way, but that's, that's my, my position. Any thoughts?
I think people, Lake is a discretion, but I'm frankly, you guys are padded about that. I'm the guy who's never had a glass of wine in my life.
He drinks milk.
I've never had a sip of beer in my life.
The VPAC...
Now, you're sounding like Donald.
But I understand that, thank you. I appreciate the compliment. But, but I understand why people want to go to the Venice Symphony and sip a glass of wine and listen to Mozart, and I can, I can understand that.
But I guess, well, and so, and I do too. And I think, you know, and even STC, I do think is a good example of just an opportunity for, especially when you're trying to reach a different necessary, demographic of ages as well to access. But my thing is, how do we control it? What unforeseen consequences can come? I certainly believe that if it's in a lease contract, there, but if it's not changed in here, no lease will allow it. So, I mean, how is, I don't know, Jane, do you know from VPAC if that's still, is that still an issue?
Well, it's still an issue from time to time, but we still say no.
Okay.
Yeah, I serve on their board, and it comes up, but not as much as it did in the early days.
And similar to the Northport circumstance, I mean, in the event there was some unique something, the rules could be suspended for a specific...
I mean, the board could waive, you have the right to waive your own rules. I would...
Caution us.
Caution you against doing that, except in very unique circumstances.
Who set precedent.
Sure.
Right.
You did it for, you did it for that group, why aren't you doing it for this group?
No, I disagree. Yeah, 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 okay. I'm not, I'm not, I don't, I'm not...
I tell my children.
I say we leave it. I think we've done fine without it. I mean, are we missing a lot of things? Are people really upset about it? VPAC's the one thing that I kind of see where it falls into it, but it has it, they've kind of been fine with it since then, so...
Yeah, it comes up at the, the two VPACs and the adult campuses is where, and I just wanted you to either reaffirm this or direct us to bring you some ideas.
Yeah, I'm going to stake with what we, status quo.
This is like over my dead body.
Okay, well, very good. All right, and any other comments on it? Okay.
Moving on.
Moving on.
3.47, the change there is a statutory change.
Does, has anybody ever brought in a, a little horse?
If they have, I'm not aware of it.
That's actually contained in the statute.
But, yes, that is in the statute.
So, it's possible to be humane and not safe? Do you want to talk humane and safe? You treat the animals humanely, but not safely?
Not all humans are treated safely, I suppose.
The little horse lobby is very powerful in the state board. They have...
Are you being serious? Or are you being serious?
They've carved out state law. They must have some influence.
Yeah, state, state law specifically talks about dogs and miniature horses.
Miniature horses.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't make that one up.
Okay, I thought someone was having too much fun. Those before they worked on the policy before this.
3.48, Service Animals, and that change is also statutory language?
Yep.
Both, actually, all the changes? 3.50, some re, kind of rewording, but I don't know that there's a lot of substantive change here. Added a few other exemptions that are in law, and then a catch-all.
A lot of corrections, though.
Okay.
I just, can you go, "No public record may be removed from the office in which it was maintained, except by a board employee in the course of the performance of official duties."
I think what that's trying to do is protect...
So, we don't have...
Record, so people don't walk off with them.
Okay.
Some of the changes, by the way, are also not correct. So, it's not that it was all new stuff. It's, the new stuff is also incorrect.
Okay.
Well, that one's, and that we cleaned up, though.
I'll get them, I'll get them all.
We'll have a proofread at the end.
Okay.
Were there any other? Okay.
Okay. 3.51 is copying of public records, and that just takes back to the fee schedule in the statute. And we took out the last sentence, because I'm not sure that really is consistent with the law.
Which one you are, because you missed...
3.51. Did I miss one?
I thought you missed 3.50.
3.51.
3.50 was the inspection of public records.
Okay. The request of the lawful custodian of the records, and that could be, is that just the Communications Department for this, for the organization, or...
Certainly, certainly that would be. I mean, if a, if a request went into the superintendent, that would be a lawful request, which I assume he would turn over to the...
And all of us as well.
All of you as well. I mean, you are, I suppose, each custodians of your own personal records. You know, but as far as, like, if it were, for example, your emails on the Sarasota County Schools.net, that would go to Communications and to IP.
But I think it's very important that we don't fulfill these requests directly, and that that goes to our Communications Department. Not that for ease, it's easy to say, "Yeah, I've got that record. Here it is." But we do keep a log of public records requests, when they were received and when they were fulfilled. And as opposed to individual employees, we do ask that that take place in a central place.
No, I agree.
We've currently designated as our Communications Office.
Right.
Agreed. I mean, I think that's, the biggest thing is, certainly, we could respond to them, but they are maybe beyond that, I think, from even a compliance issue, that we make sure it goes through the process, and that everyone in the staff also know what that is, so that we don't open us up. The other question I had from a, from a charging standpoint, if a public record's already been made, there is no cost to the, if it's, if a public record's already been fulfilled, and somebody wants to see a copy of that public record?
If they, if somebody simply wants to see a copy of a record that's readily available, there's no charge. If they want a copy of the copy of the public record, then I believe it's 15 cents.
Per page?
Correct. Per page. Yeah, I believe that's...
The cost that is not incurred on a subsequent public records request is staff time to compile and redact.
Right.
But if someone asks for information, and it's delivered in a three-ring binder, and it's 300 pages, we keep a copy of it. If we have a subsequent request, all you have to pay for is the copying of the three-ring binder, not the hundreds of staff hours it took to compile the request.
Okay. Any other, anything else? Okay.
3.52, Copyrighted Material.
Nothing there.
3.60, Flag Display and Pledge, and this is where we added the new "In God We Trust" language from the new statute. Seemed like, frankly, as good a place as any to put it.
Mm-hmm.
3.61, Moment of Silence, No Change, Statutory Language. 3.70, Agents, Solicitors, and Salespersons. Just made some, made an addition there, carving out the use agreements, people using under use agreements. And 3.80, School Volunteers, No Change There.
Okay.
So, other than Mrs. Zucker's book, which I'm going to take and give back to her.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything on Chapter 3?
No, sure.
Okay, well, I will get those changes made, and then I'll get them to Kathy, and we'll get them advertised.
Very good.
Well done, Shirley.
Well done.
This completes our responsibility for policy review.
You guys are a well-oiled team. So, that moves us to Chapter 6, which is Human Resources. Roy, would you like to join us?
I'd love to.
So, it's a lengthy chapter, as I've said before. However, I don't presume, and I should be, I don't know, I could be wrong, but I don't presume any areas that will go into too much depth outside of the, the one I've identified was. 6.12 has the potential for debate, which is nepotism.
Wait until we get there.
Yeah, no, no, but so, this one, I think we can finish today, is my whole point. So, I'll stop talking and let us go, go ahead. How about that? Okay.
Okay, and Chapter 6 was Mrs. Ziegler's, and Roy, and Scott Lempy was involved before he left, and I think Mr. Maltsby has also...
We had a whole team.
Has also so...
And this focuses with his mentee now. He is on his way to join us.
Okay, great.
Okay, so, a number of people have looked at this, but there's a lot to look at.
Yeah.
All right, so, starting at 6.10, Employment. And again, I'll just keep moving until somebody stops me.
Yeah, I'm primed if I'm looking down.
6.11.
Board Appointed.
All right, so, 6.12 is the nepotism policy, and the question is, do we want to skip this one and come back to it, or do we want to just jump into it now?
Does anyone have any issues with it, or want to talk about it? I mean, it could be just perfectly fine, as we've displayed it, and then, okay.
I'm fine with it. This is how I view, this is how, what I've always lived under.
Eric?
Yeah.
I guess we're going to seize it now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about the direct supervision. I mean, I think that, you know, you may have somebody that's more than one level above, you know, having a direct report.
I thought we did two. It's a two.
So, what's proposed is a, a two-level system, which means you take the highest level individual, then you take a direct relation, and there has to be at least two people between them. And so, as an example, if you work from the superintendent, that would be an assistant superintendent, and exec, or an executive director would be precluded from being under the definition...
So, your family member could be, I'm sorry to pick you, because you're, your, your family member could be a principal of a school.
My family member could be a principal of a school, could be a teacher in our district, could be a school bus driver, yes.
Could be a director.
Could be a director, depends on the reporting relationship, because we do have some directors that report directly to assistant superintendents.
But could, could be a director of curriculum, could be a principal.
Correct.
I just think a principal in you, it just doesn't...
A prin, you'd superintendent.
Or someone like a head of elementary, and then you have a daughter that marries the son. Is that here listed somewhere?
Correct. So, if you're the, if you work from the highest position, so if you're talking about the executive director of elementary school, that would mean that your family member, under this definition, could not be a principal or an assistant principal, but they could teach in an elementary school. But they could not be an assistant principal in an elementary school, because it would be the supervisor of your supervisor.
I just think it'd be, as long as you're the superintendent, if one of your family members is a direct report, it's going to cause an issue with that.
So, really, two things is, if you want to carve out a special exemption for the superintendent, or is it in all reporting relationships? Where you run into issue is Jody Dumas' wide-ranging responsibilities as the executive director. Can a family member serve as a custodian? Can they serve as a crew leader? Where, how far up in the organization can a member of his family go under his...
No, his wife couldn't be a custodian, I would think. But in here, I guess they could.
I think they could be a custodian.
Try to use positions versus people. I just think it's better...
Because the executive director of facilities, who hires custodians, who's, you know, the director of, whatever Lou is, Director of Custodians, he reports to them, I mean...
So, what you may be suggesting is, anywhere in their chain of command?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's pretty far-reaching, when you talk about assistant superintendents, and...
You're going to have so many conflicts when you...
I would say Jody Lou Dumas, and then Lou Strickland would be under that, and Lou Strickland would be the one that was responsible for the employees, so not Jody. So, therefore, Jody would not have direct supervision.
But if I was Lou, I'd be, I'd be hard-pressed to ever discipline my boss's wife.
Not Joe, not, not Lou.
But I think you need to be careful not to be too.
If I was a director, I would have a hard time disciplining one of my line staff when my supervisor was their husband. Is that a better way of saying it?
You're saying my daughter, who aspires to be an elementary school teacher, would be prohibited from working in Sarasota County School?
As long as you're the superintendent, I would...
Interesting.
Hey, that's why I say...
That's just my, my own opinion, because if I was the principal, I would be very leery of how I evaluated, you know, your daughter, because you're my boss. That would, that would affect me if I was them.
But the same would go through all the way up to board members, no?
Not as much, but I guess it could, I guess. In theory, in theory...
In theory, yes, I could.
I've got a daughter that's a teacher, and her principal doesn't seem to...
Care?
I'm getting care that I'm on the school board member. I mean, and she's had several principals, I mean, not several, yeah, I think three principals, and, you know, I've never interfered with anything they've said, and I've ever looked at anything they've said, but, I mean, I mean...
So, I think, what's the problem you're trying to avoid, right? Or trying to, so, and it would be...
So, for example, let's take that scenario. Let's say there was something that happened in her daughter's school, that the principal implemented, and she didn't like it. She could go to the superintendent and say, "Hey, they're doing this at Phillipi. Why are they doing this at Phillipi?" And now she's going to call, now the superintendent calls Allison, I mean, calls the principal saying, "Why are you doing X at Phillipi? I'm getting, you know, heat from my, my supervisor, my, my board member."
We're the largest employer in this county.
I'm...
And, and when you start eliminating all of these things, I mean, I mean, I think, I think the two-person level is good.
Yep.
You know, and if something comes up, we may have to readdress it if it does, but I would think in instances like that, you know, those people would have to be careful of what they do.
Yeah.
But...
And we've had this system...
We can't just close out whole areas of employment.
I have to ask, I mean, I should probably...
Come on, join us, Jess. We're at the best part, nepotism. Have a seat.
Because I know there was one superintendent we were interviewing whose wife might have come in...
President's spouse is a teacher, yes.
As a teacher.
Well, and it's certainly...it may be true in many professions, but I don't think it's true in more professions than education, where both spouses are employed, starting their careers as teachers, and one or both, you know, move beyond that. So, that's something we did talk about when we were trying to strike a balance here. I mean, there's no perfect answer to any of this. I would say that board members, in my opinion, are different than anybody else, because board members are elected.
Yeah.
And while you all have ethical obligations not to favor family members, or anybody, for that matter, I don't know that we would...could be in a situation where someone runs for office, gets elected, and then we tell some family member who they may or may not want to look out for that now they have to lose their job, or something like that.
Well, first...welcome, Jeff. Thank you. I think...I see the concern of it, and my thought is two things. What Shirley hit on the head was, we're the largest employer. I don't want to handicap our pipeline of talent any further. However, I just want to make sure we have proper procedures, and I think it would fall within the procedures. I think the two separations is good, but I want to make sure, and I would defer to you, or you, and ask, in the event there is any abuse of or influence, and, you know, how that reporting or complaint form would go through. I mean, have we seen something like that? You don't have to give us names.
No, I wouldn't.
Please don't. But...and what's that process? So, maybe that would give a little bit more ease as to what's...
I've seen a few since I've been here, and we have handled it in different ways. In the cases of an administrator supervising a teacher, we have moved the teacher, and we have moved the administrator.
Okay.
So, we've handled it two different ways in those two cases. Those are the only ones I've ever encountered, has been administrator, building administrator, and teacher at the building.
And that was...there was an issue where it seemed as though...was it that they were...
They were dating, and then they got...
No, no, no. I went that there was an issue. It wasn't that there became a family relationship, and it was one tier. We had to change positions. It was that there was a potential abuse of influence.
We've had different situations. Where were the relationship began? After the two employees were already in one building. We've had the situations where two were teachers in the same building, and one became an administrator through an interview process. So, we knew that potential was there, and they understood that one of them would have to leave, that being the teacher, because the person, the spouse, was interviewing for the administrative spot. So, those are the easy ones, because we know in advance. The more difficult ones are the ones that happen. Well, and it's easier, as we were talking this through, it's frankly easier on the instructional side, because if it's...if we're talking about a teacher and administrator, there are alternatives. There are schools that people can go to, and usually, they're happy to make that move if it means their family member is getting a promotion he or she wants. It's harder on the classified side, because, for example, in facilities, the custodial staff is all one unit. It's not broken up in 40 places.
Yes.
So, that's...that's where we...
More challenging.
Yeah, it's more challenging. You can't just say, "Well, that's fine. Somebody's becoming an assistant principal, so the spouse will move to a different school." You can't really do that in facilities or in other of the business departments. So, that's where we tried to strike the balance, and it may or may not be the right balance, but try to strike the balance with the two layers of people.
Shirley?
What about the dating?
Well, that's not...and that's family member. That's a good question. I was just rereading the definition as family member, because while we're talking...
Well, like you said, well, okay, once you get married, you can't stay here.
Right.
But while you're engaged, you can, or while you're dating, you can? I mean, because I think there ought to be that prohibition that, you know...
Well, the...
You know, the superintendent can't date the executive directors, principals can't date teachers at the school?
Well, we've defined family member to include members of households, so there doesn't have, you know, there can be different relationships in a household, obviously. I don't know, you know, how frankly we would enforce a dating...
Well, no, I don't just...
...type situation.
But that's...but that is, I mean, when...
I mean, everybody at the school knew about it. I mean...
I don't know how you enforce it if there's almost a good faith component to it, and I don't know how...I mean, I know we kind of touched on this, but...and that was, you know, when you define family member, and it says, "or any other member in his or her household," if you're not legally married, but you could be roommates or something of the sort, I would expect...I mean, and I'm sure that happens, I would expect those individuals to...I mean, and I don't know if that's something we codify in a policy or what, but I would expect those individuals, once that act has changed, you were in, what, two separate homes? Now, you're in the same. You know this is our policy. You would be forthcoming with having to change your positions. That's the ideal circumstances that always happen, and then what would...what's the implications if they aren't for...because they may not stay together. I mean, this is getting very personal.
Gets very complicated very quickly.
Yes, but so how best to do it by way of policy? Because, Shirley, I shared the same concerns. I think those are actually probably even more messy than marriage, because they kind of know how to...I don't know, you know? That's...but either way, I don't know. I would be...I'm not comfortable with any kind of...any...if a relationship starts to impose upon someone's work duties, I would hope that at a professional level, they would recognize that, but...
We would address that. And also, we have looked to various statutes for some guidance in this, and there are several definitions of relative and family member in the ethics laws and other places, and, you know, they draw on some form of blood or legal relationship typically, not so much a dating relationship.
And is that the same way it is for benefits and all of such, correct? I mean, when they define relative, there's very specific...there's part...legal partnerships or...
Commonwealth law.
We didn't mimic that as much as we...we also mimicked what we currently have agreed to in contract with SCTA and their nepotism policy, because what we had before did not match. So, we had two policies, one in contract that you all agreed to, and then one in board policy. So, we tried to get those closer together.
Okay. So, I don't know if, I mean...
I'm fine.
So, it's all about the procedures. All right.
All right, moving on.
Moving on.
6.13. 6.14, no real change there. 6.15 is veterans preferences, and this is to clarify and to make sure we're following current law. I will take your book if you'll give it to me. I'll promise to give it back. 6.16, dual employment. 6.17, appointment or employment requirements. It's a long one. 6.18, contracts, instructional and administrative personnel. And this clarifies...the changes here clarify the probationary period for administrative staff. And I think brings us into line with what our current policy is, our current procedure is. 6.19, identification, no changes. 6.20, certification of administrative and instructional personnel, no changes. 6.21, district certificates. Minor change. 6.22, teaching out of field. And that...the addition there is also to comply with statute. 6.23...
It is.
What? Having to notify...
That's driven by statute.
It's been our practice for years. It's just now caught a fud. But yes, that's a nightmare, and we deal with it frequently.
6.23 is just deletion.
Yeah. And that was for duplication, correct?
Yes.
If I recall.
6.27, no changes suggested. 6.28...
Long, but no change.
And there...this is, I believe, one of a couple of these policies that also, in addition to Scott and Roy and Jeff looking at, I think Mitzi and her staff also looked at several of these. 6.29, some changes here, tracking statutory language.
And this has been updated also for...to comply with any kind of...why am I blanking on it? Bullying processes as it relates to... Thinking...yeah.
The Hope Scholarship?
Hope Scholarship, okay, that's what is that?
Those revisions were actually contained in chapter two.
Yeah, okay.
I think, yeah, we...
I just want to maybe flag that to make sure we...they're not...did we talk about...I can't remember. I don't...okay.
I mean, we've been through...I know we looked at the bullying again, but...
It's 2.50, 2.51...
So, this lines up in it, okay. It's just the reporting certainly also, okay. All right.
6.30, just a little cleanup language change there.
We fixed some of those capitals.
I did. Did you see them? There's a bunch of them in there.
But those...
What are we up to?
6.30 here.
6.31 now, records and reports, no changes proposed.
3.9, I'm up to 3.0. How the heck do you have so far with me?
Can we strike facsimiles?
Well, there still are facsimiles. I don't know how often they're used.
Faxes. E-fax, which is basically email.
So, 6.32, no changes suggested there. 6.33, alcohol and drug-free workplace.
And again, that's still...anything in there complies with the topic we talked about before?
I believe so. Well, yes, because the law on medical marijuana specifically says it doesn't affect that.
They made it easy for us.
Yes.
6.34, minor language change there. I'll make sure everybody has a chance to look at it.
Yeah, especially with the 2.51.
But this is on the first line there. Which one do you want? Shall not participate in a political campaign or any political campaigns?
In any polit...well, it's what it says, is in any political campaign for an elective office.
While on duty.
Political campaigns.
Well, right, while on duty.
With an S.
No, I would take any political campaign. You think it has to be S?
Any polit...
Yeah, it could be one.
Political campaign.
And I think any...any is a singular, any single one.
Okay.
Right.
I think in two, I think we need to change any school board employee who offers himself. I think we ought to change that offers to suffers himself.
6.35. I'm just trying to, I think, clean that up a little bit. I don't think the substance is especially changed. 6.36, complaints.
Gotta watch out for his and hers. All of a sudden, it comes in here.
Okay.
His and hers are missing.
Oh. All right. Do you have that on your sheet? Okay. 6.37, suspension and dismissal.
Okay. I have a question here, 6.37.
Yes.
No member of the staff may be dismissed except by action of the school board. The superintendent is the one who hires and fires staff.
Personnel report.
He recommends to you, you're the one who acts...you, the board, are actually the ones who do the dismissing.
Correct.
I know that, but I've never understood that, because we have no...like, we have no say in who we want to hire.
It's written in statute.
Only he does.
He makes recommendations to you for personnel actions, which you are bound to follow unless you have good cause. So, you're right, if he does not bring you a recommendation, there's not much you can do about that, formally at least. But if he does bring you a recommendation to, in this case, for this rule, suspend or disciplines or dismiss someone, you have to vote on that, because it's the action of the school board that formally dismisses someone.
I know. I just don't like it.
I think it's in statute.
There's probably a fair amount we could each find in this book that...
Correct. It's a final...
I agree with you, but we don't get a choice.
Well, there are...
Your choices are somewhat constrained.
Yes. That's a well...good way to say it. There are options...I mean, you do have a choice, but you have to prove cause, I think, is ultimately.
But you could not just dismiss someone on your own without the superintendent suggesting that to you, recommending that.
I wouldn't want to, unless it was as a board.
Well, yeah, I mean, even talking about the board.
The board, yeah.
Okay. 6.38...
We're looking at that one sentence, and why do we have that? If the first one says, "No employee may be suspended from duty except by the superintendent or the school board," why do you say that they may suspend a member during an emergency period? I mean, if he can suspend him, he can suspend him.
Well...
Why do we say...and why would it have to be an emergency if they wanted to suspend him? I mean, does it have to be an emergency? I mean, wouldn't he be able to suspend him and say, "You're suspended," and then it comes before the board?
Well, but if the board said no, then that person couldn't be suspended.
Oh, okay. Even during an emergency?
No, during an emergency, the superintendent gets kind of some extra power during an emergency.
But that expires at the next...
At the next board meeting, yeah.
I can remove them from contact with kids and then put it on your agenda at the next meeting.
Or financial circumstances.
Well, and typically what happens...typically what happens is someone will be temporarily reassigned pending that.
But they're also...I mean, those are more student-driven, but even financial components, what administrative...
No, not for years.
We immediately remove them for their duties temporarily until board action is available to be taken, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
6.38, more suspension. 6.39, background investigations.
Okay. I didn't...I don't remember what I read, but I corrected.
Yeah.
But school board members do not have to be background checked.
No.
And yet, we deal specifically with kids, and I don't know why we're not background checked.
And we could automatically walk into schools.
So, we talked...this brought up...
Because the public gave you that, right?
Yeah. So, you're constitutional officers, and it's not...yeah, so the public voted that in. You can't...we talked about this earlier. We could, in good...make a good faith clause to do so, but who would hold you accountable for it?
On background check.
So am I, but so, you know, but technically, and taking us as individuals, but the seats itself, we don't have to be. I think that in the case of, you know, I guess if you think of it from a sexual predator circumstance, where you can't be within a certain range of children, and a board member was...
Well, that's...I mean, that's somewhat different. First, someone could be...you are all, of course, subject to being removed from office.
Correct.
And sexual predators and school board members, that could be a reason. But if there's a court order ordering you to do something or to refrain from do something, you are still subject to that court order.
Correct.
And if you violate it, you will suffer whatever that penalty is.
So, if I wanted to change something, I'd have to change this to Tallahassee, because I think that all of us that run for school board should be background checked. I really do. And when we are sworn into office, we should have a background screening.
Yeah, I would have to be legislative.
Knowing all the stuff that I've gone through with background screening people for five, 10 years. 10 years.
So someone gets elected to office and they got the most votes, they got 99 percent, they trounce the other person, the public wanted it, wanted that person for whatever reason. And maybe it came out that that person had something in their background that would pass background check. Who knew? DUI. So then, then they, they get a background check at the school board and they get denied. Then you would say that they would be...
Well, it's background check, that it wouldn't be denied, it would be, here's your background check, here's your...
You got a background check and it says the guy's got DUI, he smoked marijuana in high school, whatever, blah, 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 blah.
What do you do with it?
What are you, what are you going to do then?
Therefore, you just proved my point. It should be done before.
As part of the qualification process.
As part of the qualification process.
So when people run for office, there would be a...
Ooh, baby. That's legislative.
Yeah.
All right, so let's follow that out under current practice, which is after being elected to the school board, we do ask that you participate in a background check. If an individual refused to go through our background check, we would limit their access to our schools and would escort them anytime they were on the campus. Or if they submitted and failed, I don't have the ability to remove them from office. I certainly have the ability to limit their contact with children.
You would certainly have the ability to always make sure they were escorted.
Correct. They would never be unescorted on a school campus. But I couldn't say, you're a school board member, you can't go to any of our school sites. As a matter of fact, there's some...
There's a law that says they can't.
There's a new law that says you can visit schools whatever you want, but when you did, you would be escorted at all times.
I think that would have to be the way it would, would be handled.
Yep. But yes, the, the idea that you're not qualified to be an employee of ours but could be on our governing body does seem a bit at odds.
Well, this happened, that's, that's why.
Could have happened.
None of us. But it could have happened.
Could have, yes.
And there was no way to stop that.
I'm sure there's no shortage of circumstances.
No, no, there is a way to stop it. It's the people. The people decide, the people get together and the people decide who they, they want by reading everybody's qualifications.
It sounds great, Eric, but it isn't, so...
I think the question is, I don't disagree, I think it comes down to who, the authority of which, what you can do with that information. That, to me, is the most important part. I mean, we could, I have my opinion, you have your opinion, the voters have their opinion, they're voted on, we're, you know, constitutional officers. It's after that's done, what do you do with that information? And I think the superintendent brings forward a very valuable, you know, solution. If you don't go through it and just out of an effort to continue to ensure safety of our children, and that's what we expect anyone to do, and they have, they have the ability backgra... What, level two background check to be around children, if you don't go through it as an elected officer, you still have the authority and duties of a board member, but you don't have the authority to be, and I'm, I'm fine with that. And that's currently what we do, correct?
Is it? No.
That's a purely hypothetical, currently...
What do we do, Roy? I just remember filling out a bunch of paperwork, but I know I went through a background check before my appointment, so, very thorough.
You did go through a background check. If we had a problem with the background check, we would take it forward to the superintendent and say, why would you like this person restricted?
Yeah.
Within the schools?
It's for your badge that we get, correct? It's just a part of a process we already have, so, so...
So we don't currently restricting anyone, so...
No one, for the record.
For the record.
No one is restricted at this table.
Should that be in policy?
Should it be in policy? That's up to you.
That's, I mean...
That's the authority.
You could do that. I don't, I don't believe you can require a school board member to be background checked. I think you can put limits on people who are either not background checked or who do not pass, similar to what the superintendent was, was outlining. But he, he cannot stop a board member from going to schools either because there is a fairly new statute that specifically gives school board members... I guess somebody tried to do that somewhere, I don't know.
I do, and I could share it with anybody.
Not me. We would have to go to Tallahassee.
To, to get something that said school board members have to be background checked would have to come out of Tallahassee. You can't put that requirement on each other yourself.
But as a district, again, we can, and that is a level two, that's statute, though. I mean, that's correct, level one, level two, and this restriction around children, if you...
Right.
Eyes and ears, right?
We are required to do level two background screening of all of our employees, and if they do not pass, and by do not pass means if they have been convicted of one of the many enumerated crimes, they do, are not cleared and they cannot be our employee.
And they're supposed to be background checked every five years?
Yes.
Correct.
I have not been background checked since...
We don't reprint, we actually just send what we have back through Tallahassee.
That's supposed to happen on a yearly basis.
No, every...
No, every five years.
Every five years.
We send them through every five years.
That happens, I did this for 20 years. What happens is every year, you get, you get a report, and the report says that this person is still okay and this person is not.
From which agency? From which agency? Who's sending?
Jewish Family and Children's Service.
I know that.
Through...
Because we're required to rerun every...
FDLE is...
Right.
FDLE.
But they don't...
They would notify us if there was an arrest during, anytime during that five years that we have your prints.
Yes.
And then we rerun them every five years just so they can update. But they would notify, if you were arrested in the state of Florida, we would get something probably within 24 hours.
Now, it's the procedure of the Powell's Office, actually, you re-register with them on an annual basis.
Right.
For volunteer.
That's where I'm coming from.
We're thinking...
And connect the dots, yes. And so you may get a list of these people haven't re-upped. And so I'll tell the story on myself, I want to volunteer with my daughter's speech and debate club. Her teacher came to me and said, strangely enough, you're not on the volunteer list because you haven't re-registered as a volunteer. I know you're the superintendent, I know you have a badge.
Kudos to that.
But you need to go down, you need to go to the Powell's list and get on the 1819 list, and it took about 15 seconds, but she got a printout of, these are the parents that are approved to have, are level two approved and can have contact with students on field trip, and she said, you're not on the list and you can't serve as a chaperone until you go down to the Powell's Office. And yes, kudos to her.
Seriously, well, I'll talk about all the different policies we just talked about and the concern of, that was, no, that's good.
But I think that's what you're referring to.
But I don't know, so from a, from a solution to what you're concerned about, what do you propose? Do you want something in policy? I just concern myself with a couple of different things of what do you do if that doesn't happen? I think we already have that, but do you want that in policy? I have no issue with it because it's, like I said, level one, level two, and I thought it was statute-driven. If there are certain infractions that are on someone's background check, they are unable, the eyes and ears, I always use that, so if you can be within eyes and ears by yourself with another student, is that statute or is that just...
By yourself with a student anyway.
No, but let me have to tell you what happens.
So just the duplication of...
What happens, reality is you come in and you're not supposed to be by yourself, you're supposed to be in a classroom. But one day, the teacher says to you, would you take the classroom next door? Would you take the Johnny next door and two to him next door today because I'm running some, doing something different here? And the top person who's not background checked to do that takes Johnny next door.
Right, so, but we're, we're talking about board members right now, so...
Well, the, the, there are a number of background check statutes. 1012.315 says, "A person is ineligible for educator certification and instructional personnel and school administrators are ineligible for employment in any position that requires direct contact with students in a district school system, charter school, or private school, blah, blah, blah." If the person has been convicted of, and then there's a list that goes through...
It's a felony.
You, you, or, you know, I mean, that many, through you, you, you know, so...
My issue is my qualifications to have this job on the, the Florida Constitution, I think.
Right.
I have to, I have to be an elector, I have to reside in my district and I have to get the most votes. I think that's my...
I have to be 18.
Yeah, to be an elector, you have to be 18. You can't just be 18, you have to be an elector.
Yeah.
You have to be elector in the district and you have to reside in...
Right, we don't, we don't set...
And you have to get the most votes. I mean, yeah, the, the state constitution sets the qualifications and so to...
20 years, we have 20 years.
Yeah, you have 20 years to do it again, or we can collect petitions and...
But I think there are legislative elements you could do if that's something you want to do.
But what you're talking about is having tiered school board members.
No.
I don't think it's going to be successful, but...
No, I think we're fine.
I, I think we're fine the way we are. We ask school board members to get the background check and if they don't, you know, they, they have somebody with them. I mean, that, that pass that we give them, you know...
It goes through the same system we do for others. So it'll be, it'll be flagged. So I think, I think if you look at it under the guise of ensuring the safety of our children and something came up prior, after someone was elected, I mean, probably make the paper, but I don't know, you never know. But as long as we have, I mean, I...
I mean, I would think too, if, if a school board member got elected and then couldn't pass that, I mean, I would think we would probably have to notify the principals or something, I don't know. But, you know, let's cross that bridge when we come to, we haven't had that yet, but we may have.
We almost did.
We may have.
Not even close. Not even close.
All right, moving on.
Thank you.
Strong try.
6.40?
6.40. Not, not any big substantive changes there.
They happen.
6.41, instructional employee performance criteria. That's nomenclature changes.
Yeah.
6.42, job descriptions, also just a title change. 6.50, leaves of absence.
So eight was changed for purposes of statute, what was eight? Why did we change that?
I think that was just, I think that was just cleaning up the verbiage in eight. And then in 12, we changed the date, I think based on our procedures.
Right.
Changed from March to April to give people a little more time. 6.51, no change there. Same with 6.52. Same with 6.53. 6.1...
What about 6.521?
Yeah, you skipped one there. Did I skip one?
Oh, yeah, and that's a big one, that one, that recently changed too.
Sorry.
It's okay.
6.5...
21.
21.
Oh, I must have...
That one was that one that we just recently did an additional amendment to.
Oh, I must have had that in my other, my other book. That one was changed, at least the first paragraph is changed because we ran into an issue recognizing that people now with the new calendar are actually ending work in May as opposed to June. So there's language there that the effective date of a termination shall be, it was, it did read, "The first day on which they are not paid." And people are also getting paid now under our, I don't know how new it is, it's several years, that people are getting paid throughout the summer, correct?
We changed our way, our way we pay people through the summer, which affected...
Which was part of collective bargaining several years ago. The employees actually wanted to be able to get paid instead of getting, instead of getting, I think, four or five checks basically at the end of the school year or near the end of the school year, they wanted more certainty in their budgeting and got paid...
That's right.
...through the summer. So if you're saying they are, remain employed even if their last day of school was when they separated from employment at the end of May, technically they're being paid through July. So this cleans that up.
Correct.
To say now it's the last day that they are compensated within the scheduled year. So that would be through...
Right.
...May or June, whenever that is.
Which I think makes more sense, anyway.
And it also talks about the holiday pay. An employee has to work the, you say...
Right in B.
Right.
So they have to work the day before or after a holiday to be paid, or they can't be on leave, or if they call in sick, or if they take a vacation day, or what?
If it's, if they're on unpaid leave at the time of the paid holiday, if they're on a paid leave, if they're on sick, they're sick leave or what have you, then they still get paid.
Unpaid being maternity leave or something, I don't know what else.
Could be, could be, yeah, childcare leave for a year or...
Personal leave.
Personal leave.
FMLA.
FMLA could be paid or unpaid.
I was going to say, that's what I...
Could be paid or unpaid.
Wasn't my first example.
Except until the last day before Christmas break, then you're not a maiden.
Are you okay with those changes, guys?
There's no paid holiday that makes up the Christmas break.
I think we're good.
Okay, sorry about that. 6.52, no changes, I think you said that one. 6.53, retirement. 6.55, temporary duty, just added cost center head to that. 6.60, this is specific about transportation and drug and alcohol testing.
Yes, it does, I asked that, right when that bill was passed, or when they did that.
Yes, we have not changed any of the policies prohibiting marijuana use. Correct?
Correct.
Right.
6.61, I don't believe we have any change there.
How often are they drug tested, do you know? For, for driving, bus drivers, CDLs?
Oh.
It's only...
Their CDL renewal? I'm not sure.
I don't know. I...
Regular employees, all, besides bus drivers, when they're, when they're first employed?
And the only other, the only other would be accident, post, post-accident?
Right, transport, I know, I don't know how often, I know that transportation, that drivers are randomly tested. They're also tested after accidents.
Right.
Not randomly.
We'll do a reasonable suspicion test, if we have a reason to do a test.
Of any employee. But there has to be reasonable suspicion, there is no random.
They'll send them to the drug clinic if we have a suspicion.
There has to be...
Actually, we have it come to us now. We don't send them, we don't send them, we have a mobile one, we bring right to them so that we're not risking them traveling anymore.
Yep. Smart.
6.62, putting things on the website as opposed to hanging it in different places. 6.65, no change there. I think that's the end of volume one.
So it is long, but we're making it.
Roll it.
Who came up with this term academic collaboration team? The ACT instead of just director? I'm, I'm, I don't care. I'm just...
I didn't, I didn't buy it, if you noticed.
Is that more, is that more stuff that superintendent is doing to us?
That's right. I just sit around and make up acronyms.
6.80, EAP. 6.88, no changes. 6.90...
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Apple breaks.
Hurry up before she comes back. Hurry up before she comes back.
Okay.
She worked hard on this.
6.90, personnel files, no change proposed there. 6.91, minor changes for clarification. 6.92, no changes recommended. 6.111, no change. 6.141, some changes there. Athletic coaches. 6.
Athletic coaches have to have a background check before they're with the kids, or only if they're one-on-one?
No, no, they all have, they all, they all have to, they have to be certified now too as well, don't they?
Any, any paid coach must have a certification, which goes through, we all do background checks, but also the volunteer coaches, we background check.
Not a teacher certified, coach certified.
Coach certified.
My, I.
That's also a statutory change.
We had some that they hadn't had their background checked yet, and they were saying no as long as they're not.
IBCPR, things like that.
One-on-one with the kids.
They're not allowed to be anywhere, coaching anywhere without a badge. If they don't have a badge, that means they haven't been background checked.
So they have to have the school badge. Okay.
Obviously not in all cases.
6.142, no changes recommended there. 6.143, employment of non-degreed vocational and adult. Some changes, I think to clean up the language.
Yep.
6.144, this is about paraprofessionals and makes explicit the requirements.
Those are the highly qualified requirements the state placed on all.
6.145, substitutes. No changes recommended there. 6.171, just referencing the collective bargaining agreement, which needs to be followed in this circumstance. 6.172, licenses for bus drivers. 6.173, responsibilities of bus operators, no change there. 6.181, no change recommended. 6.301, just adding cost center head. There we got one, we got one capital there. Caught one.
Which one?
School board. We got the capital B board on that one.
Right. You got it.
6.302, just taking out a rule that no longer exists. 6.303, clarifying vehicles. Count for possession of weapons, which is in the statute.
Can I, can I ask a question here, just for clarification? In some of the policies, it says his slash hers, and in some of them, like this one, it says, or in his or her. This is not consistent.
Guilty.
Leave it alone?
We can do whatever you would like, but I think you're probably right. I think, I mean, I think I probably typed that and put in his or her, but.
It should be his slash her.
Okay.
I have a question. I'm gonna just, as it relates to now that we have an internal police force with, from arming standpoint, do we need to address that at all?
For talks about authorized law enforcement officers, so those would be our, our folks as well, ours or, or other jurisdictions. Could be. That would certainly be a weapon.
Okay, so that would, okay, okay.
Would this, would the, the for, the authorized law enforcement officers, would that include guardians if we used guardians?
We don't.
If we did guardians, it would necessitate a change.
It would necessitate a change, probably several changes.
So like if the charter schools that are using and following this, they, they probably needed to make a change in their policy.
That would be in their own, in their own policy.
Yes.
Because they are not certified law enforcement officers. 6.304, private instruction and tutoring. And we reference back to policy 9.30 that we had conversation about several months ago. 6.305. 6.306, no change recommended. 6.321, just.
Department.
Title, department change. 6.322. No change recommended there. 6.501, took out a paragraph I don't believe we need, I think it was covered in one of the earlier policies that we looked at. 6.502, no change recommended.
I'm gonna, I just wanna go back to 6.322 really quickly.
322, okay.
Sorry. And surely, sorry, I just wanna make sure the maintenance and monitoring, and I know we have an, we're gonna likely have an upcoming, we will have an upcoming discussion on social, well, public records as it relates to texts, but also some of the social media components came up, right?
Right. There's, there was a separate policy that's proposed brand new, so it's not part of this policy book that Joe Benzwanger worked on and had conversations with me and others about, that we had a workshop on some months ago. That is not part of this chapter six review, but we do intend, the board said to bring it back, so we will do that. I'm not sure exactly when.
Hopefully very soon. But the only issue I have then would be on section four, maintenance and monitoring subset C, and it says, and there's a footnote here, rightfully so, is that this has been an issue, and it says, comments from, you know, district accounts are intended as a one-way communication tool to provide information to the community. Comments from other parties on social media network will not be published, which we can't.
I believe that as part of the conversation about the other policy, that Tracy and the communications department are gonna have some suggested changes to this policy as well.
Okay.
But I think that will be, I mean, we could, well, we're not suggesting at the moment any changes to this, but there could be some changes suggested to this policy at the board workshop where we talk about this subject separately.
So before we advertise this, I think we wait to advertise this until we go through that one, so we don't spend the money to advertise, bring it back.
Individual policy or the chapter as a whole?
Cause we don't, we, one of, one of the few benefits we school districts get in Florida statutes under the APA is we don't have to publish all of our policies individually. So, but.
Okay, oh.
So I don't think it would be a major, you know, we're not paying to print every word, in other words, but we certainly could hold 6.322, you know, for the greater conversation.
Yeah.
Or we could hold all of chapter six. We're not.
No, no, I think he's right, just, just that subset, that.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a note for myself that we're, we're gonna hold on 6.322 for the moment.
I'd like to go back to 6.306, and that kinda refers back to an email that I had sent where we have that you can do an end-of-year gift or expression of appreciation, they're supposed to be small, and, you know, any substantial gift giving is strongly discouraged, and then, and that the principal will approve in advance requests for purchases for larger things, because then we go back to, so we're not supposed to give them a gift, but we can go out on social, on these donors, and I know I've given a couple this year, but when a teacher is asking for something, some of these, I understand, go into the hundreds of doll, I mean, you wouldn't do it for $50, they do it for hundreds of dollars, maybe even over $1,000. Cause, I mean, I, I think that that seems to me to go against what this policy says, or maybe we need to have something in here that allows for that. I don't know.
I'm reading, Eric, I apologize.
Gift. To someone individually.
Not a classroom.
$500, go forth and have fun.
I look at that differently than, I'll be the first one to buy me out. Oh, you have an artistic classroom, you need sensory stuff, here's $500 from me, go. Oh, maybe I'm not supposed to do this. You know, and I say, $500 for your thing, buy, pay for equipment for your sensory room.
All right, so if you just.
I don't get to that, a gift to the teacher.
But help me, continue to follow your thought process, cause it's a very helpful exercise. Let's say you give $200, $300, $400 to buy sensory equipment for the classroom. Who owns that? If the teacher transfers to another school or another district, does it remain at that school site in that classroom, or is it the property of the teacher and they move it to their next classroom, school, district?
Well, from my, I'm just trying to see what I do. I always like to check to the school. I never really check to the individual.
And I think that's the underlying issue. If you go out on GoFundMe and you get $1,000 worth of books donated, do the books belong to you, or are they your personal property if you transfer schools, districts?
Well, I've gone to the book fair and I see the teacher's recognition, and I go and I buy every single book, and then I go around the school and I hand out the books to all the teachers. Do I think those are probably the teachers? Yeah, I guess they're probably the teacher, but in my mind, I'm not buying a gift for the teacher, I'm buying it for the classroom and the kids.
That's where this policy becomes difficult for us to administer, which is, I'll use the example, one time we bought a carpet for a teacher, you know, a little carpet with the numbers on it. If that teacher transfers schools, does the carpet belong to her? You know, it's a couple hundred dollar carpet. That's the question, and typically, I'll tell you, it moves with the teacher. Yes.
But why, I guess, for me.
Is she going to have that carpet with all those numbers on it?
No, that is not standard issue.
They belong to the teacher.
But what is.
Watch an elementary school teacher move from one classroom to another, you will see how much is their personal property.
But why, I, indulge me as to why that's a, like, what problem does that create?
Because the new teacher comes in, doesn't have that carpet.
Well, that, I mean, that's, I mean, I guess, I, that's a good. No, I know.
Well, you know, maybe, maybe it's just that we say staff gift and solicitations. Maybe we take out solicitations, because they're not soliciting, they're not soliciting for a gift, but they would be soliciting for the donation. So what if we just change this section to staff gifts?
The question is, what's a gift? That's my question. Is a gift, when I give them $100, go forth, or is a gift when I say, here, I'm gonna buy a bunch of books for your classroom?
But you know, if you're buying $100 for that child's classroom.
Oh, it's $100.
Let's, let's take it, let's take it to giving a pickup truck to the baseball coach at Sarasota High, when you want your kid to be the pitcher so that he can get, I mean, this happens.
I know, but he wants state champs.
All right, so maybe that pickup truck, maybe that crossed the line, or maybe it didn't, but I know there were people who complained that didn't get to be that pitcher, that their kid also wanted that college degree, but the kid who father donated the pickup truck got there.
That's a gift. Clearly, that's a gift, but I'm talking about things that are used in the classroom.
Well, the coach used the pickup truck.
Was, okay. No, I don't just, I think you're right. I think, I think, but again, what's the problem causing at that point? And I think that.
Or a better grade for your child.
Take that to the next level, if that was causing any, if a gift, that's private at that point. I mean, if it's giving a child a certain preference versus if it's a gift. I mean, they're two separate things, and the second one is a big difference of that is not allowed, correct?
Correct.
We have policies on that, correct? So.
And coaches are renewed on a yearly basis, and if you've got a coach doing something like that.
And if there was able to be proof of that, I would say that that would be, I mean, seriously, because I think, I mean, it's a good example and applicable.
Got a truck from Matthew Curry.
But, but there are, if there is a gift, and it's at extreme, I mean, I, my biggest, I think that's an extraordinary circumstance. My thing is, I think that we all agree, and I don't think that you're trying to, please don't misunderstand, I don't think you're trying to avoid this, but I worry that, I think it's great that there are families and PTOs and businesses or school board members or whatever that wanna help our teachers supply their classrooms or field trips or whatever, and so adding nitp, I'm using the wrong word, but being too narrow.
But, but perhaps we need to do, you know, I'm, I'm just saying that, that may be in conflict with this, and it's just, I'm, I'm not saying we need to make any change, I'm just saying that maybe we need to be thinking about it.
And then.
One point that I normally let the principal know what I'm doing and giving money, but I'm inundated with people soliciting money, so.
Yeah, and, and then if there's an issue, and that's why I ask, has this been, has there been a problem? And it's a, principal says, this is our, this is my school's or X school's inventory, and a teacher says, no, this is mine, has that been a problem? If so, maybe I see more reason to try to articulate it better in policy. That's what I'm trying to understand.
I'm not aware of any incident where the principal is standing at the school door saying, those sensory toys were donated to our school, that carpet was donated to our school. Typically, the practice is, it moves pretty freely with.
Okay.
The teachers.
Yeah, and some of the stuff that, you know, like some of these funky chairs, I mean, the teacher wants them.
Yep.
And the next teacher might not.
I just want, yeah, I, I just don't want it to be so limiting where, I want the, you know, schools have autonomy and the teachers to, the community to feel welcome to provide them.
Certainly.
Okay.
All right, so we're okay with that as, as it is?
And then 6.322 we got done, so.
6.322, we're just gonna hold.
Yep. 6.501?
Where? 6.501?
Just a strike.
Sorry, taken me a minute to get there. All right, yeah, we talked about that one. Okay. Not yet. Close. 6.502, we talked about. 6.521, we talked about, that's the holiday.
Yep.
6.531, drop. 6.541. 6.542. It's a long one, but just a title change. 6.543, illness or injury in the line of duty. I think this was trying to clarify the times here. 6.544, no change. 545. No change, military leave. 6.546, the change there on personal leave talks about requesting personal days prior to a number of holiday periods. I think that, well, and I haven't checked everyone, to be honest, but I think a lot of them have no, if they've never been revised, it's not for this revision. This apparently in 2001, right. Right, this is, but until this revision is made, there have been no revisions to this. That's what I'm gathering from, from it. Correct. These will be revised when you formally revise them. You're two meetings ahead.
Or six.
546.
Did we have to, the, the last day, the students, prior approval at least one week in advance? Is that a lot? It just seems like very little heads up. Very little, especially on those, I, I was surprised. Why did we add it? That's what I'm curious.
Is that the language out of the bargaining agreement? I believe it's. I believe it's language out of the bargaining agreement.
Sometimes we get notice at 5:00 AM of that absence.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of notice in our, we're happy.
In our world.
So baby staffs, because I said, I think that's.
I was happy to agree to that in bargaining, so.
Every school has a process in place in which a member of the classified staff checks for absences when they wake up that morning and attempts to fill those vacancies.
Okay.
That process starts at 5:00 every morning.
Okay. There's no such thing, but yes, you may.
Well, you certainly get FMLA if you do.
Yep.
I see maternity leave right here instead of family leave.
You do.
You do.
There may, well, I mean, I know we have a separate FMLA policy.
Yeah, but it went from family to maternity versus, I would agree with him, if we put it.
Perhaps, perhaps because.
No, but I think you make a really good point, and then.
Because it uses maternity leave within the body of the language, but let me, let me read it here.
I mean, so you can't have family leave and verify a pregnancy.
You can have family leave without being pregnant, that's my point.
Well.
But in the.
But you can't have.
You can have a child without being pregnant.
Certainly, and that, that could be FMLA leave. It also could potentially be parental leave, but it's not maternity leave, because you're not pregnant. One is not, one does not mean you can't have the other.
But, but, but does somebody who had a child through pregnancy, do they get more rights than somebody who had a child not through pregnancy? That's why, because you made distinction. Usually, you make distinction because they're not equal. That's why I make the distinction.
I'm not entirely, I mean, this was pre-existing, I'm not entirely sure why it was written that way. This talks about a statement verifying a pregnancy, so my guess is this is leave not after the baby has come either through birth or adoption, but before. Somebody needs leave while they're pregnant.
But if you continue on, under A, maternity leave is balance for the remainder of the year. If you go down to B2, it talks specifically about adoption and the balance of the school year, so it's.
Equal.
It's, it's the same rights granted under both circumstances. It's, it's the same rights granted under both circumstances. So that we don't have a debate about whether that classifies or not.
But why, why not, I'm just curious, why separating the two? Is there a reason?
I don't know of any reason to separate it, other than, other than that's how it was written and we weren't thinking about combining them.
Maternity leave, because you, you would sometimes have before the child is born. I mean, you know, and you've, and they say you've gotta prove that you're pregnant, you can't take maternity leave. You can't, but you could have the parental leave after the child is born.
Okay.
And after you adopted a child, but maternity leave is for the time that you are pregnant, not while you have the child. That's what's the difference.
It's not exclusive to that, okay. But I think that...
Not, not everyone works up until the day the baby is born.
I understand, but there are times, I mean, I don't go against this, but I've had all my kids without having a pregnancy. And you can, there is a time between the time you have a child, and during that time, I mean, just so you know, you get, you know, the kid doesn't actually get to become yours, just be callous about it, for about three to six months. I mean, there's, there's a foster caring process.
There's a foster caring process, there's a, there's a period of time before, between the birth of the child and the child having your name, your name's on the birth certificate, you adopt the child. There's a period of time between those two periods.
But isn't it also true that under maternity leave specifically references the fiscal year in which the child is born? But an adoption may take place at birth, age three, four, five, 12? And so this one actually is more broad, it says at the time of adoption.
But, but my point is, the date of adoption is not the same date that you get the child. You get the child three, four, five months, sometimes a year.
And so you're saying that you may want to leave when the child comes into your life, that's the transition.
Yeah, you'd want to leave at the time that the person, the child, the person, the child gets born.
And I believe we grant them that way.
Comes into your life, comes into your life.
So maybe what we need to look at then is the language in B2 here. Which says, an employee may apply for leave of absence on the event of his or her adoption. And what you're saying is, that really be...
We need to be broad with the time.
Should be earlier than that.
Yes.
So what's the, and I, that makes sense to me. So what's the, what's the proper language?
That would illustrate a broad enough, that wouldn't just be the date, the actual adoption date, but...
Child placed in the home.
Child placed in the home, yeah.
But that makes it more limiting, no?
If you're a foster parent, would you be qualified for leave each time a foster child? Or maybe that's what we wanted to say, that we would...
Pending adoption, perhaps pending adopt, child placed in the home pending adoption.
So, so here's the process, you get, you get the child, then they, then about, within, 30 days after that, they turn right the parental rights, and then after that, 30 to 60 days after that, you can have the adoption. So there's multiple tiers.
That's if you adopt a brand-new baby.
Brand-new...
But if it's an older child, it takes years.
Well, but I just wanna make sure that we're very specific about fostering relationships that may or may not result in adoption and what rights you wish to grant.
Placement of child, that's what Jane said, placement of child.
You're talking about a process that was intended to result in adoption.
But what about foster?
Employees who foster children, some of which leave their home, others that result in eventual adoption, so...
Do we cover all those in this? No, and...
How about if we say, an employee may apply for a leave of absence upon the placement of a child pending his slash her adoption? Does that, does that cover? Is there, I mean, is there better language? Provided, yeah, provided.
Makes sense.
And that includes that you want to take in a foster child as well?
Only if it's pending adoption.
Yeah, but pending adoption...
It's a very long process, I mean...
And I hope you continue the process, Eric, of if, if children come into your home, but it's not through your pregnancy. Because that just would just disturb the whole balance of the site.
Ay dios mio.
Okay, but yeah, but you could, you could theoretically have it, and I don't wanna get too much into detail of my personal life, but it could be a long period of time.
Right, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so we, so we're gonna correct that, is that gonna come back to us?
Well, if you're all all right, it'll just come back to you for purposes of approving it for advertising.
With a flag, yeah.
You're gonna get up, I mean, they'll all be back to advertise redlined. Okay, 6.547, professional leave, I think we did that, I think we did that one already. 6.549, sick leave, and there are changes here, I think, trying to...
A couple.
Contract and statutes on, on sick leave. Yeah, the, how much sick leave people gets credited, that's all statutory. Mm-hmm, that's statutory. 6.911, sick leave bank.
Is that the one you've been waiting for?
Oh, yeah.
All right, Eric, would you like to just... Are you serious?
Yes.
You didn't have an issue with it?
No, I'm fine now, they answered my question.
6.912. 6.913, these all were looked at by Mitzi and her staff. 6.914. 6.915. This is, this is use of sick leave by family members, which is also statutory and in the bargaining agreement, and has its own definition of family member, which we've included here. Correct. And 6.921. All right. So, going, going forward, I'm going to get Mrs. Zucker's edits.
Thank you for doing that.
I will incorporate those. I will incorporate those in here, and then with the exception of the one, which number I forgot already. 6.322. All the rest of Chapter 3 and 6 will come back to you, probably at the first, it'll take me a little bit to get these all ready, come back to you for advertising purposes the first meeting in November.
Perfect. Do we, do we still have some more for...
That's it? And then we have the one, so four or five, and then the one that we talked about, the additional one with the Joe...
6.322, kind of combined with the other one that, I don't remember the number that was put on it, but in Chapter 6, that Joe did.
That will not come back during our policy review, that'll come through a regular workshop.
Yeah, so...
So we're one more session from being done with these pre-meetings.
Right, whenever, whenever you all are ready on four and five, whatever evening we're doing those, we can probably do them in November.
It's a big one, it's instructional, it's a biggie.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, our Jeff, everyone. Thank you, Caroline, we are adjourned until 6:30.
Yes, I'm with you.